Good morning. So, good to be here. All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Monday, January 9th work session. Got a couple of items on the agenda this morning. We're going to talk about tall grass enforcement and budget timeline update.
Morning, Mayor and councilmembers. Happy New Year. We have, yes, just a couple of quick items for you. Well, the first one might go a little bit longer. About the end of November, I believe it was, I had John Norris over at the county approach me indicating that the tall grass and weed removal was giving them a lot of challenges. And when they really looked into it, the city of Des Moines residents were almost entirely where the count was for where they had to take care of these items. And unbeknownst to me, the state code and what the county does across the state is responsible for weeds, noxious weeds. It's more of an ag thing than anything, so it doesn't find its way into ag uses. And the tall grass is a different situation that was just for now, a few decades is my understanding, has been taken care of at the same time as those weeds. And they have asked us to take that over as a city nuisance. And they would continue the noxious weeds if we were to run across those. But for the most part, the workload is all about the tall grass. And so when we talk about transferring those to the weed commissioner, they are asking for that process to change. So, we've spent the last six weeks trying to convince them that maybe there's a hybrid in here, maybe if we help pay for it, it would make sense. Because as you might imagine, there are thousands of calls a year to that regard. So, I'm going to set the stage at that. And now I'm going to turn it over to Chris. Because we're at the point where we have to start ramping up with resources for this spring and very quickly do that. So, I'll let him introduce Dalton and the rest of the team. But Chris has got some ideas for us. And obviously, we will need to bring this back to you a few times. So, this is just introducing the topic. Chris?
Can I just ask a quick question? What do they spend annually on staffing for that?
I don't know that we got a good number on the staffing because they had hired mowers to do that in years past. And the last two years, I believe he said, they have had troubles even hiring mowers and keeping the equipment going. So, they've had full-time county engineers and technicians doing it, which is really overpriced for those staff to be working on mowing issues. So, they also didn't spend a lot of time on the policy discussion. And so that's where we're here to talk with you about is what are even the right policies around that? If there's different ways of handling it, which there are. And fortunately, we have Dalton and Malcolm in our offices that have been in other cities that have done this type of work. So, we're trying to combine the best opportunities from other communities to see what we want to do here. Does that help? I mean, it wasn't a particular budget as much as they just put it together every year.
I'm not sure how we're going to get the staff, but go ahead.
Yeah.
Morning, Council. Chris Johansson, Neighborhood Services Director, as Scott kind of led into, here to talk about grass and weed enforcement. So, just a little bit, just with the history, I think we all know that historically, it's been operated by Polk County. Annually, Polk County Board of Supervisors would pass a resolution, giving the authority to the county Public Works Department that they take enforcement action on weeds and tall grass. Current Iowa code does not require the county weed commissioner to enforce action on anything outside of the noxious weeds. Scott kind of said, it's kind of more set up for agricultural settings, and I think it's a little bit different in urban setting as well. Polk County historically provided this for the city at no cost. And one thing to remember, and it'll keep coming up, not so much today, but when we get into talking more about our policies in the future, the standard that the county had is 12 inches. So, they enforce anything once the height of the grass gets above 12 inches. So, changes to the weed enforcement process for the city. Polk County is no longer going to conduct the tall grass weed enforcement as they have in the past. They met with us the end of November to discuss these changes. Some of the concerns that they cited, that the majority of the work, I think it was around 95% of the complaints they received were within the city limits.
Do we have a number of what, I mean, presumably, there've been a number of complaints over the last five years so that we know
Yeah.
what that actual number of complaints is?
Yeah, last year, the number of complaints were 1,678. And kind of one thing, as we talk through those numbers, you know, those are the complaints where you go out and do the initial inspection, but there's always the follow-up inspection. So, the number of inspections, we've kind of calculated, this is going to bring us to, is 3,700 just based on those numbers. But we do anticipate
Do you know how many of those complaints were for the same properties?
Or? I don't know if we know exactly.
Multiple.
Yeah, if there, how many repeats there are, that's something we could dig into as well.
I mean, it makes a pretty big difference if the average property got five or 10 complaints versus
Yeah.
that's 1,600 unique complaints.
Yeah.
It's still a lot.
There's a property adjacent that he doesn't maintain the hill on Kirkwood, and the only one that does is Polk County Weed Commissioner. And it's done two to three times a year.
Yeah.
Because he's an out-of-state owner and refuses to do anything.
As an example, let's go on, let's keep this moving.
Yep. The other thing, one of the other struggles that they were having was being able to staff a seasonal mowing crew. And because of that, they were going to have to pull some of, they were pulling some of their full-time employees from other assigned duties to conduct the nuisance mowing. One thing, just to remind everyone, Polk County is not obligated to handle any portion of the process, so just remember that. So, as we talk about this today, there's obviously a number of challenges this creates. Policy for the city, this is something we're going to touch on briefly today. We're scheduled to come back at our quarterly work session to get more in-depth, talking about the policy the city will need to create and what that's going to look like going forward. Staffing, how we're going to staff this with the inspections, mowing, how this is going to be done. And also, just a reminder of our other priorities we have going on with our neighborhood inspection division. With regards to policy, currently, obviously, we don't have any provisions in the city code that give us the authority to take action. This is going to be a change we're going to be making to Chapter 42. These changes that we're going to be talking about today, just touching on briefly, we're going to come back in more detail on the 25th to allow more time to get into the details. Obviously, the length of grass, the county currently has 12 inches. We've done a little bit of review across the metro just to see what comparable, what other cities have and what their standards are. They allow, how much time we allow for compliance, as Councilman Gatto just kind of mentioned, how we, and Councilman Mandelbaum, how we handle habitual violators. And if we want to set different standards on different zoning classifications, such as residential and commercial, have different height requirements for grass for enforcement as well. With staffing, currently, obviously, Neighborhood Inspections Division does not have the bandwidth to take on the additional duties without current, with our, at our current staffing levels. Minimumly, to do this, and this has had a lot of discussion with the city manager's office, our recommendation to the city manager is we're going to need to hire one additional supervisor, one clerical staff to help with the call, call volume that comes in, and hire a minimum of two inspectors. This is kind of a starting point, but to get through this first year, this is what we think we would need to have on staff. How we would work this throughout our whole Neighborhood Inspection Division, I think the first year, looking at number of staff that we do have coming on board, we could be looking at having our new staff just focus solely just on this for the first three, four months through the first mowing season. But moving into the future, this is something we're going to want all of our inspectors to enforce on. And so it'll be spread across all of our other 17 inspectors as well.
I would just add that this is covering the administrative aspect of this only. And so, this is assuming we would be able to figure out a contract or put the mowing into one of our existing contracts.
I have a question, because I think it makes sense to spread it out across the other 17 super, or inspectors. Why would this require an additional supervisor?
We're getting to the point with our, we have three, we have 17 inspectors over three different supervisors right now. Think by adding another supervisor with the additional two inspectors we have, we're getting to the point with our capacity for supervisor per inspector is getting a little bit large, we think. So, we think if we could have four separate teams across the city for neighborhood inspections is kind of the way to go right now.
So, that's as much about a capacity needed
Overall, yeah.
inspections overall, rather than just
Yes.
the additional
Yes.
the additional work here.
Yeah.
Because we're really talking at timeframe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When grass.
I mean, it is seasonal, so are they, these are going to be full-time employees?
Yes.
So, what?
They're going to
Are they going to do the rest of the other six months?
Yep, they're going to do junk and debris, rental inspections, everything as a normal neighborhood inspector would do.
So, just beefing up your total staff to encompass
Yep.
more, doing a better job with that.
I'm wondering how often this would overlap with other inspection requests or complaints?
It could with junk and debris. I know that is a common thing we get in the summertime where there's a complaint on junk and debris. We go out there and do the inspection, and obviously, the yard could be overgrown. That would be a complaint we'd make to the Polk County Weed Commissioner. So, there is, there is a little bit of efficiency we will see with that, too.
Yeah, I would think it would be up to every inspector to take this on.
Yeah.
Just a couple, maybe for the first year or whatever, to get it underway. But every one of them should be doing it all in their regular routine, I would think.
Yeah. As Scott alluded to, with regards to mowing, currently, the city has four, has five existing mowing contracts. One of the thoughts we had when first talking about this is the other five contracts already have priorities, already have demands. One thing we didn't want to do was to piggyback this work onto an existing contract and have the risk of harming one of the other contracts that have been in place, and it seems like it's been working perfectly for the city so far. So, one of the ideas was to do an RFP for our own contract specifically for this work. The demand on this is going to be a little bit different. The properties aren't going to be set, you know, it's going to, we're going to come up with new properties, and they're going to have to respond and be able to mow. So, our recommendation is to do an RFP, go out to bid for an additional contract, mowing specifically, just for these enforcement actions. This is something that we're going to start putting together. I know as we talk further about the length of grass requirement, that's going to need to be a part of the contract. But this is kind of the direction we're looking to go in, is to start another contract for this service.
Concerns that I'm seeing, and I think Polk County has done a great job. And I get a lot of calls because we've got a lot of vacant houses and a lot of vacant buildings in Ward Two. And, I mean, I've got them on speed dial. And now, and usually, they want you to send in an email. But I can specifically think of one place, and I've sent, I've sent zoning the emails, Polk County. But it took all summer for Polk County to be able to get in there and mow because the grass was so tall and people use it for dumping. So, I mean, I got on the neighbor's gator and we went through it, and I took pictures of tires and cement and all kinds of junk. But it took zoning like all summer to get out there. And I kept calling Sue Ann and saying, you know, look, we can't mow because of all this junk that's in here and nobody's doing anything. And it's like, well, we have to send the property owner a letter, we have to wait two weeks, then it has to go to, I believe, legal, which gets it hung up, no offense, but it does. And it was, it was all summer. So, finally, I think it got mowed one time, but only after all the junk and debris. I mean, there's got to be, there's got to be a better way.
Yeah. And I know when we get into this, looking at our, the notice requirements we're going to need to have for this, that's something we're going to have to look at. Hopefully, with, you know, us handling the junk and debris complaints with these, with the mowing complaints now, maybe that's something that could give us a little more efficiency with it. But that is something we're going to have to do better on to keep on top of it. The one thing I do think is a positive moving into this summer is we did pass the vacant property registry ordinance.
That's where it was going to go.
So, that is something we're going to, we're going to know pretty quickly, you know, who the, where the vacant property is and hate to assume, but it's probably accurate that that's going to be our habitual violators.
It is.
And have that direct contact with them to be able to get them out there and hopefully take care of the problem.
I mean, I'm familiar with a couple of properties in like clockwork, every two weeks, Polk County, they'd show up with their Polk County trucks.
Yeah.
And they only do the front yards. Nobody does the backyards.
Yeah.
Which can also be a problem, but I realize that, you know, we're not talking about backyards. We're talking about front yards only.
Well, yeah, yeah.
That will be part of the discussion because there can be just as many impacts on backyards as well.
Sometimes it's hard to get back there with
That actually will be something we'll need to work closely with legal because now would be the time to look at those policies as well.
Really.
Yeah.
I mean, I turned in a vacant building the other day, but Sue Ann said it wasn't on their radar, so she was going to send somebody out. But I would think, I mean, a lot of these are just vacant
Yeah.
vacant buildings.
Yeah.
Would that make administration more efficient if we have that registry set up?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, are we looking at recouping our cost, Mr. Lester? From this? Are we able to, are we able to obviously charge or put lanes
Yeah.
on properties?
Yeah.
We can, we can, we can recruit, recoup costs of the program. Can't be a revenue generator, but we can recover the cost of the program, yeah.
And then we're going to need more than just one crew to, I mean, I have concerns, you know, how we're able to keep up with what we have with the, with the contracts that we've got. Now, we're going to tack on nuisance properties and, yeah, this makes me really uncomfortable because I know how, I mean, some of the mowing contracts we have, they don't, they don't do it. We have to call them and get it on, get on them. So, yeah, this, none of this is good.
Yeah.
And another question I have, I know along Four Mile, the city owns some of those lots, but apparently, there's been an agreement that Polk County would mow some, some of the area and they take care of the city ones, and that was through a Public Works arrangement. Is that still intact?
Yeah, my understanding is it is.
Okay.
And it, it changes one parcel to the next as we garner more.
Okay.
But this would be different. This, again, this is as, this is as needed, and so it would be a very different looking contract than the rest of our mowing contract.
Because like, there's one area that's DOT land that I know I've sent Scott multiple pictures of, but Public Works, our Public Works Department is supposed to take care of.
I have a question, this may, maybe as much for the city attorney. We can recoup costs, what kind of penalty can we have? I mean, I'm not interested in that for someone who just does this once or twice, but if, if, if there are folks who are essentially just delegating by neglect to the city, I mean, I think we want to discourage that behavior. And do we have, do we have tools if it's, you know, if they regularly have three or four violations, or if they have multiple violations one year and we track them into the next year?
I think that's something that we can certainly look at. In the city I was at before here, 12 years ago, they actually did enact a habitual weed violator ordinance. And I'll double-check and look into that for you. But I would think that there would be a measure that could be adopted by council to address those people that, as you're saying, Councilwoman, that just never do it and let the city do it, because that's probably cheaper for them and there's no violation.
Yeah, I think that would be important to make sure, especially the habitual ones.
That's exactly how the problem
Yeah.
Somebody living there?
We do have that stipulation in there. So, maybe eventually they'll stop and hire their own crew.
That would be the ultimate goal, is people hire their own.
I would want to avoid not punishing people for like inability or poverty or anything like that. So, I wonder if there'd be, if we'd be able to line that up with the vacant property ordinance or something like that specifically?
Something we could certainly look at.
Yeah.
And I think that point is well-taken. I think we have people who, this might be a second property or an investment property that they just stopped engaging on. And I think we can hopefully draft something with sufficient nuance that, that covers that, either considering vacant property or other type of
Or non-occupied or something like that.
Is the county still, and maybe this is a question for you, going to maintain their program for mowing folks that are in the situation that Councilwoman Schumacher said? Yeah, no, they do.
They have a deal for seniors, probably, probably more for seniors.
That didn't come, that didn't come up, so I don't know. Do you think though?
We'll have to talk with them. I'm not, it didn't come up during our conversations.
Okay.
Hope they are.
Yeah, well, bring it up.
Definitely, definitely.
I know some of the nonprofits, I know Rebuilding Together has worked with Polk County to help some of those people that maybe need some temporary help with mowing.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, majority of them are seniors and they've done it for years, but I just wonder if that program also is going away.
Yeah.
Probably I'll look in this one.
No, there was two different crews, I think. One went out and did the seniors, one went out and did this.
Yeah, I think, yeah, definitely look into that.
If we're having to take on that program, we're going to have to figure out how we determine who belongs to what program as well.
Yep, just a reminder, just with NID's primary goal, secure housing, safe and secure housing. Our NID territorial inspectors will continue to handle health and sanitation, junk and debris cases in their territories as well. Other programs we do, and this kind of just gets to our priorities and how we fit this in, blitz on blight, odor, which we've, we've had more work on more recently, mosquitoes, we have a contract coming for any of this evening, and vehicle impounds and vacant monitors. So, just a, just a reminder of the other workloads we have working with the two. One thing that Scott has alluded to, Malcolm and Dalton, Dalton Jacobus, NID Administrator, he's been with us about six months. I know he's real excited to have this new responsibility coming his way. But this is new to us. I know over the next couple of months, as we're talking about this, there's, there's a little bit of learning curve we have, as I know everybody on council will have too. But I know our goal this year is get staffed up and to be able to respond to the complaints we have. I obviously will admit, I know after going through it one year, we're going to have to refine it next year as we keep moving forward. But we are planning to put our best foot forward to start off this spring season with. Just kind of alluded to, the 25th is the next time we'll be in front of you at the quarterly work session. We'll go over the staffing again. This is where we're really going to want to get into the policy, looking at the height requirements. We have what the comparable suburbs do, how they look at it for different zoning classifications as well.
Have we looked at other cities, not just suburbs?
Yep, we certainly will.
When we're thinking about the height requirements, I hope that we keep in mind, like, people who are growing like pollinator gardens, prairie grass, things like that.
Yep, that, that has come up just in our discussions already, you know, how we, how we look at that.
Okay.
Also, sort of related is there were homeowners that were doing no mow May.
Yep.
And I don't know how, how wild that got in just a month, but
Yeah.
It got pretty wild.
Obviously, we'll talk about the mowing contract in greater detail the 25th as
I mean, there is a philosophy behind no mow May that we might want to look into of like determining if we're taking this on and how much we're taking this on, and how necessary it is in areas where we're not dealing with sightlines and things like that.
Yeah, I know we did look, not only by zoning classification, but developed or undeveloped land, that's a thing that I think we all need to consider, too, as we look at our policy. Well, thank you. I know we'll have a lot more discussions on this moving forward, especially on the 25th.
All right, thank you. Scott, let's move ahead on the budget timeline discussion.
Okay, I'll have Joe come on up. Nick unfortunately is unable to join us this morning. So, let's see, there are a few challenges with this budget cycle. There are some new aspects and large numbers impacted, so I'll let Joe dive into that and I'll speak up as, as I'm aware of some of these items. But we also had a couple of council members ask if the, if the schedule could shuffle a little bit. And so, I'll let Joe explain that we're looking at delaying the a little bit, and so I'll let Joe explain that we're looking at delaying the approval and therefore some of the reporting out will also be delayed.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Joe Branstad, our Deputy Finance Director, filling in for Nick Schul today. Yeah, Scott, thank you for, for introducing this topic. One of the reasons why we're looking at doing this, I guess before we do that, you can see the calendar that we have in front of you that shows the different listening posts that we conducted. We did one in each ward and got a lot of really good feedback on the budget and a lot of good impact, input through our city website as well. So I thought that was a success and hope we can add on to that in future years. As Scott alluded to, the big change is we want to push back our approval date from, initially we were planning on March 6th, which quite frankly was a pretty aggressive timeline for us. Usually we've taken the budget for approval the following week or even the week after. So we came in with an aggressive timeline and we're wanting to push it back to, to actually hold the hearing on the budget till on March 27th. Some of the reasons why we're wanting to do this, the, the topic that Chris just talked about is a perfect example of tall grass. This is something we didn't think about through the budget process, it just kind of got thrown onto us in November. So we're scrambling to find money for this program. You know, eventually we can structure in such a way where we can recoup some of the costs, hopefully the program, but initially we're going to have to purchase vehicles, hire staff. So we're, we're planning on trying to find a way to get that in the budget. Some of the other challenges that we've had has been related to just changes at the state. There's a new backfill program for commercial and industrial properties where the state basically reduced the taxes on commercial industrial properties up to, I think it was $250,000.
$150,000.
$150,000, thanks. But the state is backfilling us for the losses that we have. So we didn't find out until Thursday afternoon the, the mechanisms for that to happen. So now that we have that in place, we can move forward with how those different funds go into, those different dollars go into the different funds that we have. And then just valuations, valuations from the county assessor are due January 1. We do have a small section of the city in Warren County, and we didn't get the Warren County valuations until Friday. So we are a little behind the eight ball due to some other external factors. Other than that, I, I think we, the other component that we were wanting to move back was the release of our budget document. This will give us a couple more weeks to hopefully bring you a thorough, as close to final budget document as possible. And then we would also hold our budget all-day workshop. I know everyone enjoys listening to Nick and I talk about budgets for eight hours. We would push that back to the 15th of February. And in between there, we would do our usual set hearings on max property tax, hold that hearing, set the hearing on the budget, and again, hold the final budget hearing on March 27th in advance of the due date of March 31st in the county. So, yeah. If there's our, our March timeline I was discussing. Not, not a huge change, but just something wanted to make sure that makes sense to, to council and Scott.
I mean, essentially, we're just pushing out of the process. So, I mean, that, that means that every other step, we need to make sure we're particularly on top of it, getting sufficient information because, I mean, I know when, when we have that scheduled in mid-March, if, if something comes up or there are questions or contingent to deal with, we have the ability to do that, but I don't even think we, we wouldn't even have time to notice a different hearing. So that, that's my only concern is just flagging, flagging that piece.
Do we need to schedule for an all-day workshop on February 15th? I don't think, I don't think I have that on my calendar anywhere.
That's the new date.
And when you say all? I, I think we went from about 9:00 AM till 2:30 or 3:00 with a lunch break in there.
Do we have that on a calendar for an earlier date?
I believe it should be in your calendar for February 1st.
Split it up in two days, we're not here all day. That seems not to work for, for a lot. Like the 13th and the 15th, maybe, or? 15th, yeah, what I mean, or the 14th, 15th, I mean, I, I don't know.
Are you busy around Valentine's Day, Joe?
I mean, I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's up for discussion if that's what.
15th and 17th, or what, I mean, just something that we're, we're not here all day. That, that didn't seem to work real well the last time we were here, but in the afternoon that.
And if we've got time scheduled on the 1st, I mean, we don't need to do the whole budget, but maybe break some stuff up.
Well, I'm, I'm not here on the 1st. The 1st is also an issue with having all the good information. We would need that information the next several days to have.
How's everybody's schedule on the 8th? If the 15th doesn't work for everybody.
No, I mean, it, it works. The 15th works, it just.
Just worry about the all-day time frame.
Yeah, that, that's a concern.
We can certainly, maybe do two half-days where we're not eating lunch.
What does the 16th look like?
Rough. Difficult.
I'm sorry.
Difficult.
And the 14th?
Worse.
I mean, I would be able to, we can do, what about on the 8th, the 8th at the half a day and then finish it on the 15th, those two Wednesdays, is that possible?
So we could, we could do the 8th, but you would notice the release is on Friday the 3rd, so some of your concerns, you, you may still be going through all the documents, obviously, but having the 15th is a follow-up.
We, we could prioritize some of the, the smaller budget line items on the 8th and then have the general fund and CIP on the 15th for a little deeper dive, and then you'd have more time to document it.
I'll talk to you.
Does that work for you, Connie, too?
So mornings?
I know you're busy. No, the 8th, that's, because if it's only a couple hours, if we have a shorter timeframe.
Oh, the MP is on the 8th.
Yeah. In the afternoon.
No, it's at 11:30.
11:30.
How long if we have smaller items?
I mean, if we start at 7:30, we can be out of here by 11, can't we?
Three or four hours each time.
I've got a meeting on the 15th at 10:30, but maybe I rearrange some.
I mean, 7:30 to 11 on the 8th, give you adequate time to.
Yeah, I think on the 8th, we can, we can tackle some of our enterprise funds, municipal housing, and then save the, the general fund and the CIP.
Maybe we ask Joyce to reach out with some dates around those two weeks and figure out when people are available.
Yeah.
But tentatively, it looks like you're thinking mornings on the 8th, 15th.
That's about the only, yeah.
Yeah.
Which one?
Which one?
And we've got Invest DSM Executive on the 15th.
That's why I'm saying we all have schedules, so I hope, we can schedule like we schedule any other work.
Friday to 17th.
Well, we could, we could.
That would be easier.
I think, as Connie said, we could probably get them to move it to 1:00.
To the 8th and the 17th would work better?
Yeah, just around the 14th is going to be really hard. Like morning of the 15th would be very difficult.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Morning of the 15th would be difficult.
You can't make morning of the 15th. We have legislative discussions probably each of those Wednesdays, too, in the morning.
Yeah, those can reschedule. Were, were there other issues with the afternoon on the 15th? Was that still?
Might be on a plane, that's all I'm saying. I'll talk to you about it, but like if we can get Joyce to just figure out schedules, that might work.
Yeah, that's worse, too.
And understand, we're going to record these as well, so they'll be available.
So, so these are informational, bring us up to speed, but we're not taking these workshops.
There's no action.
It's just council for council's purpose, yes.
It'll be very similar. I think this will be the third year we've gone to this format. If you recall, for years before, we would start in, oh geez, November and start walking through the enterprise every couple of weeks. So this approach is intended to give you as much information at one time to help you make budget decisions. So I think the two days will, that, that will work and it'll, it'll still be condensed enough where we're, you're able to retain that information when it comes to approving the budget.
I, I will note, I prefer, I, I prefer the old system where we were getting information earlier in the process, but I'll just say that that is my, my preference. Obviously, we can't do that this year, but that's why I, I mean, I already held the February 1st time on the calendar, but I, I think that's more for future years than for this year, because it, it's hard to, when you're absorbing it all at once, it's hard to modify. It's more just.
Well, on that note, we could pick off a couple topics on the Monday morning work sessions in February as well.
So. I, I think that potentially makes sense to start picking off some of the easier topics.
All right, we'll, we'll, finance and CMO will figure out how much time we need and how to possibly, because maybe it's a couple Monday mornings and keep the Wednesday afternoon.
23rd, workshop, is that what you're talking about? 16th, CMO.
Uh, February.
February, so the 6th and the 20th. The 6th and the 20th, we have Monday morning work session, could add stuff to those rather than be done at 8:00.
Be looking for that because we'll want to nail that down in the next couple of days to inform the public as well, so they can tune in if they'd like.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Anything else, Scott?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Everybody, any, what's scheduled for this evening? No closed session? So, 4:45? All right. All right, so we'll start at, at 5:00. See you all then. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.